Yes, it is. I'm on right now. I'm just waiting. I'm a panelist. I'm just waiting to to join in. Yeah, I've already, I'm on the video right now.
That taught me I'd be a TV star. Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Armit zoning board of appeals this April 14, 2022. As required by general law, chapter 30A, sections 18 through 25, and pursuant to chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, known as an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. The public are able to attend this meeting either in person or via the alternative public access. Members of the public may watch the meeting live on channel 18 or watch and/or participate in the meeting hosted in Zoom. The meeting notice provides necessary instructions to join the meeting via Zoom. Please note that audio and video and screen sharing functions will be disabled for all attendees. You make requests to participate by using the raise the hand function. This evening, we have the following members. Mr. Richard Neets to my left, Mr. Jay Frapery to my right. Always enjoyable to see, but wish he was in person. We have Mr. Sean Igo via Zoom. And my name again, as I've stated with Stephen DeYoung. We have several matters on our agenda. We're going to step out of the agenda just for a very brief moment to consider what has been proposed to the board as draft revisions dated April 5, 2022 to the board's rules and regulations. This may be very boring for everybody other than the board. We have, hello Kathy, would you identify yourself to everybody at home?
I'm Kathy Williams, the town planner.
And would you go ahead and tell us about the suggested revisions?
What we tried to do here in the rules and regulations is we wanted to add in a chapter which is called chapter 53G, which allows the board to hire consultants. So if you have a particularly difficult or complex project or requires some expertise that the board doesn't have, or maybe even town staff doesn't have, these amendments would allow you, at the expense of the applicant, to hire your own consultant, basically as a peer review to provide guidance to the zoning board of appeals. While we were taking a look at that, we also talked with town council and staff. He suggested some other minor edits in here, but also slightly more significant edits to the chapter 40B comprehensive permit portion of the rules and regulations. I'm not going to go into detail on the minor ones, but when you go to page nine for comprehensive permits, it's a slightly more elaborate or more detailed process that's outlined in here. A lot of it is state statute, so it's not anything new, but it kind of, it's nice to have it all in one location for people. It generally outlines the purpose of it, identify some additional materials that would be required to be included. Some of them are on the plans themselves. Some of them are, you know, a list of the exceptions that would be required to, from our zoning bylaw, a pro forma of how they would be developing it. The members who are on your developing marketing team, you know, you cite eligibility application that you send to the state and also a draft of your affordable housing regulatory agreement. That'll give you guys a lot more information to look at. It also includes references to review fees, but we'll talk about that a little bit more later. Just generally outlines the public hearing and decision process. What happens if there's any significant changes to the project, how that would be handled. And then also the ability for someone to appeal the comprehensive permit, what that process is like. Article 11, starting on page 15, is really the meat of why we started the process of looking at the rules and regulations as that consultant fees. So it kind of identifies the purpose, which is, as I referenced, hiring outside expert consultants. And it can be a myriad of different types of professionals. It could be engineers, scientists, financial analysts, planners, lawyers, landscape architects or architects. So it really allows you guys a lot of, a lot of room in order to hire the expertise that you feel that you need for a particular project.
Could I ask a question about the petitioners' responsibilities under that? Right. Are they stuck with any fee that the consultant could ask? Do they have the right to accept it or decline to go forward?
They have the right to appeal it, and they would be appealing it to the board of selectmen. I'd like to think that staff and the applicant can maybe work together and come up with a reasonable fee. Obviously, we don't want to provide them with a very large fee if they know it's going to take $25,000 for the town to review, that that might be seen as exorbitant. So it would need to be a little bit of a, what do you guys really need in order to get the additional information?
Well, I'm not thinking of this board, but I'm thinking about the possibility in the future of the board constituted in a way that maybe they want to be overly careful and subject small petitioners to those types of consulting fees, which they have no ability to pay. And I think that's a concern as to whether or not they have to go along with the fee or whether they can withdraw. I suppose they could withdraw without prejudice anytime.
If they proposed and they indicated to you that they did not want to provide the fee so that you didn't have the expertise, you would then be making your decision based on that information. And you could deny it, feeling that you did not have sufficient information in order to.
Do they have that right?
They have the right to appeal it.
But they don't have the right not to agree to it?
I think their right to not to agree to it, if anything, any additional information that you ask of a particular applicant, if they don't provide it, how do you address that? How do you deal with it?
It doesn't seem user friendly to me, is my concern. I'm not concerned about us. I'm concerned about the petitioners.
Well, the only way this is going to happen is if you guys say you want an expert opinion.
Okay. Well, I got to tell you, in all the years here, I can remember one request to town council to weigh in on an issue, and it was this year. So it doesn't come up often. And certainly, we would make no direct request to town council. And I understand now that that was a question that I had, but you've answered it. Lawyers can also.
Would the request for opinion from the town council come under the purview of the consulting?
Our town council? I don't believe so, because our town council, the way it works now is it's kind of a flat rate for his expertise. But if you wanted to hire some, someone to evaluate a technical or traffic but he had a very large project and you weren't comfortable with the traffic analysis that was submitted, or you wanted to know whether all of this made sense, you could hire a traffic engineer under this. This is, these are in the regulations for the conservation commission as well as for the planning board. I don't believe the CONCOM's ever used it and the planning board's never used it.
CONCOM has. They've used it on two different projects. Yep.
So they've had the prerogative before we have had it?
Yes, because it hasn't been put into your, into your rules and regulations. You needed to go through this formal process of having this initial discussion today and then two weeks from now at a separate meeting, this would be when you'd be actually.
When did those bodies get the prerogative to do it?
A couple of years ago, maybe.
In two weeks from now, what? We consider it a second time?
Yeah, the way it's written in your bylaw now is that this, these changes get presented to you at a meeting, and then they actually would get voted on in a subsequent.
Okay.
But if we do that this time, they won't get to the town meeting.
It doesn't need to go to town meeting. It's just you guys making this decision at a regularly posted meeting.
Wow, we have power.
With a lot of.
Kathy, I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
The section 10, comprehensive permits, I mean, there's a lot of information around the public hearing, how it all works. Is there anything uniquely different from what we usually do? I mean, that you remember?
The timeframes are different for a 40B with regard to, you know, when you have to have, those types of things are relatively different. And the main different thing with the comprehensive permit obviously is the special permit to allow for changes in the zoning bylaw, in a sense. And that's why they have to come up with their list, list of the waivers. And lots of times, it also comes with a definitive plan for comprehensive permit. Instead of coming to the planning board, it's something that would, you guys would handle under the comprehensive permit.
Are you aware of, don't you, don't tell us where, but are you aware of any possible 40As at this point? Or 40Bs, rather?
Mary Wagon would be better able to answer that, but nothing, nothing that I know of that's come to me.
Okay. Can't even think of tracks of land that would be able to do it profitably, but okay.
I mean, even the, even the, on Virginia Street, the Habitat, I think that went through 40B and it was like six. But that's an easier way for them to legally do that.
Remind me of that. That was one of the most, the poorest presentations that we've ever seen.
There was also in here under the zoning administrative powers. Is that completely eliminated now? Does that mean that?
No, it's not eliminated. It's like if you guys wanted to give powers, identify a zoning administrator and then give them certain powers, you'd just have to vote those powers and identify what they are.
Well, we've always had that in a different way.
I guess, and then did the need for a quorum go away? I just, it was like the old three.
I asked town council about that. It's just the statute. And it varies depending on the type of appeal that you're seeing. For like a comprehensive permit, it only, it's a majority vote for that. Obviously, for your appeals and your special permits and variances, it's four. And if you're just doing general business, like if you were just doing this particular business today, it would probably just be three of you would be quorum.
Is that why the quorum thing got pulled out just now?
It got pulled out because it's just.
Into each section now, depending on the.
It would have been six more pages if they put all the circumstances.
And the other thing I had, just, there was one thing under 42, it was like an applicant or opponent may appear. Does that mean, I mean, does it, you've crossed off opponent. Does that mean opponents no longer have to appear in person? They can just like write a letter or?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah. I don't know why that was changed.
I was just curious, because usually we have people.
Yeah, I will check that. But yeah, good question. There's, it says an applicant or opponent may appear on their own behalf.
Right.
Okay. Typically, it's the applicant who appears on their own behalf and/or representative.
Well, not necessarily. We get many opponents that appear. But the way it reads, it's redundant. An applicant or petitioner, so.
Yeah, I agree. It's not right.
That's why I was confused. I think that was all I was really, I think those are the only questions I had.
Before we bring it over to Mr. Igo, I'm very concerned about not having a definition of quorum.
Okay.
And the reason is, is because I don't want to come into this meeting with Dick Neets and myself or Jay Frapery and myself and proceed with the meeting, because we can't deny it going forward since we have no quorum requirement.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think quorum is identified under the 48 statute. And as Kathy just was discussing, it depends on what is before the board as to what or how many people need to make up that quorum. I think, I know you like to proceed with five if you can. But it's either, I believe the last time I read the statute, it was either four or five to make up an appeals quorum.
Is there a reason, Sean, though, we wouldn't state it just in our rules and regs that instead of referring to another document?
Well, if we, I guess the only thing I would say is, is if we put it in our reg, you got to have five and someone shows up and there's only four, and you say we can't proceed, then we're violating the 48 statute.
But that's not the way our former rule read. It only required a quorum to be, in some instances, three and in some instances, four. Because you've attended meetings with me when we have only had three people, we couldn't go forward.
No, I know, but I think that was a little confusing, the way we had the rule written. I think we should defer and review the statute if we're thinking about making any changes to our rules or to clean it up, which I would say if it is confusing, we should certainly do that. Because those of us that have been around for a while might understand it better than others that may come in the future. As Dick just said about this last issue that we were talking about, it may not be as clear to a future board. So maybe we could look at that in our rules and regulations and perhaps have a discussion among board members as to how we want to proceed with that. Just a suggestion.
I can work up some language with town council to add that in if you'd like.
When we talk about a 40B and requiring only three affirmative votes, that's the vote. That, that's not the, what we're talking about. We're talking about a quorum of how many people must be in attendance to consider any petition. And, you know, I think it should remain four. I don't know how we should, could ever conduct a meeting with three. But.
Because you can't.
Just my point of view.
You can't have a vote if you're voting three, right?
Well, that's correct. But I mean, that's because we rely on the statute.
Yeah, but you could still hear evidence and anybody that wasn't there could vote later if they had participated in the, watching the video, couldn't they?
I don't know.
I don't think so. I think the 48 statute.
I'm sorry, Sean.
I was just saying, I think if you review the statute under 48, it says, the language says four or five constitutes a quorum to hear appeals.
I'd like to think town council. Regulations, huh?
Well, yeah, but we can't write a regulation that runs contrary to state statute, I don't believe.
I can look into that.
Okay.
Maybe just define where the statute is.
Yeah, you can come right out of the statute.
Yeah.
Just, I think it should be here so the public knows. Instead of having to rely on their great legal expertise of knowing to go to four, chapter 40B.
Okay.
You just said that to see if you.
Sean, did you have any questions of Kathy?
No, I didn't. I think the other board members covered some of the things that I was concerned about. I'm fine. Thank you.
And for those that are home, perhaps watching by Zoom or on channel 18, is it?
Yep.
So on channel 18, please know that whom I'm referring to is Sean Igo, a regular member of our board who is appearing via Zoom this evening. So we recognize him. We can attest to the fact that that's him.
Yeah, they may be able, they may be able to see him on Zoom.
Maybe, yeah. All right. Anybody else have anything they want to ask of Kathy? So now, as I understand it, in two weeks, this will go to a vote.
Yes, I'll take, I'll talk to town council about modifying the quorum and then we'll take, fix that back to opponent. A very good catch. And then hopefully we'll be outside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Sean.
Please drive safe.
Take care, Kathy.
All right. Our next matter is that of Kane Barrow, Tedibo. Barrow's Group Atlantic Realty Trust and Tedibo Group Atlantic LLC. Benzeneck property located at 147 to 153 Route 6A Yanath Port, that property being in a zoning district B1. The applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 301.2 and/or variance pursuant to bylaws section 301.4.4 for parking lot buffers and from, excuse me, 301.4.1 to allow parking in front of a building. Additionally, pursuant to 203.5 of the bylaws for side and rear setbacks for proposed bond dwelling unit. Mr. Kenny is appearing on behalf of the petitioners tonight. And the ongoing reasons for why we have continued this and continue, it still apply, do they?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And when would you like to continue it to?
I've requested an extension to May 12th. That's a date I picked arbitrarily, but I'm trying to keep the pressure on, to keep this thing moving forward. It's been going on for quite a while, but we're asking for May 12th.
Well, I mean, I, I understand the reason. I think everybody understands the reason, because we've all dealt with it.
And the project is being, because of those earlier reasons, being redesigned. The family owns a hotel in Hawaii and top of everything else with COVID, their business has really been taking a hit. Hawaii was basically shut down for two years. If you went there from, you had to quarantine for 14 days and nobody was going there. So they're revising the project substantially. It may end up being, as a right deal. Looks like the back building on the, on a long narrow lot is going to be gone. And we're working on a truck turnaround and we just may have some, from, some buffer relief requirements. We're working on those, trying to eliminate them because of the narrowness of the lot. But so we're still revising the plans. We're hoping to have them prepared within the next two weeks and submit it to you if, if it ends up having to come back to you.
Did you meet with your client in Hawaii?
I wish. They travel back to Boston for.
Does anybody have anything they'd like to say on the request for the continuance?
I just wondered whether we had room on the agenda, because it was filled, I think.
Yeah, you have four items on the agenda for the 12th. Two of them are singular wireless applications. 161 Springer Lane and 47 McNamara Ave.
Mr. Chairman, I have no trouble pushing it out further. I mean, the May 12th was just a date I arbitrarily picked, so.
Right now, do you have a better agenda for a later meeting?
The next, the 26th is full with four applications. June 9th has only one application.
That's fine. Are you comfortable that you'll be able, I mean, the 12?
Yes, they're, they've got a building permit. They're renovating the existing store, the historical structure. So they have ongoing. Activity on this project, so.
Move it to June 9th, though, instead, if it's okay with you. Would June 9th be okay with?
Yes, that's fine, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Igo, any, any input?
June 9th works fine with me, Mr. Chairman. If that pleases the petitioner, that's, that's fine.
I don't think we've ever opened this hearing, have we?
Yes.
We did. Dick, did you sit on it? So you'd have to, if you sit on June 9th, you'll obviously just have to see the video. You sat on it and I have no idea. So, okay, great. So does anybody want to make a motion concerning this? Subject to the execution of an extension agreement?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the continuance to June 9th.
Second?
Second.
Does the board care to have any discussion prior to moving it along to a vote hearing? None. Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Neets?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
And Mr. DeYoung, Zaya, Carrie's on a four row vote, roll call vote. You need to sign an extension with.
I think you should have it in your folder there. He sent it in.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, it's in?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I submitted to sign the extension with my request.
Yeah, probably said.
Oh, maybe we need to change the date.
Yeah, said till.
Yeah.
I can initially.
So why don't we just sign a new one?
Okay.
Would that be okay?
That's fine.
I think you're right.
Thank you, Mr. Kathy. Good to see you.
Thank you all.
Our next matter is that of Robert E. and Leslie M. Please forgive me if I don't say this right. Vino? I hope I'm saying it right. Vino? Vino. The property is located at 12 Vermont Avenue in West Yanath, Massachusetts. That property is in a zoning district R25. Oh, jeez. Yeah, I'm sorry. Wait a minute. Step back.
I didn't think I was next.
What did I do? I went right over the next applicant.
I was not disappointed, but I.
The next one is petition 4928, that of Ryan Family Amusements located at 1067 Route 28 Yanath, Mass. That property being in a B2, thank you, in a B2 zoning district. On a motion of the chairman, the matter is coming back for consideration due to the inability to perform the condition, one of the conditions we asserted, right?
Yes, yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you tell everybody in our audience who you are?
I certainly will. I'm Marion Rose from Singer &amp; Singer in Dennisport. I'm here representing Ryan Family Amusement.
Good to see you. And so we can't get all those trees we wanted in there?
We can't, but since the decision, I don't know if you have my latest.
That's what I just handed out.
So since the decision, we have, Ryan Family Amusement has planted additional trees. There are two additional trees, no, sorry, three additional trees in the Route 28 buffer. And on the parking lot islands, in total, there are four trees in each.
Isn't that in the spirit and intent of what we suggested?
We are trying to do the right thing.
Yeah, how's it going? Have you moved in yet?
Ah, yes, it's going very well.
Great.
Yeah.
And we're getting axes, so that's good.
Well, I've got a client that does axe throwing, and I told him about it and he's all excited.
Good.
I'm trying to drum up business for you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Igo, I know you sat on this.
Yeah.
And we wanted to see, I think it was you, actually, that suggested that we have trees on those interior islands. Somebody did.
I think that might have been Mr. Martin. He's our A aficionado on the board. I don't want to steal his thunder.
And this was brought to my attention. I thought, oh, we can't have roots going down in the septic system. That's not good for anybody. So do you have any questions about petition or concerning this matter of waiving the condition as being satisfied by what they put in?
Um, I don't have what they submitted, so I'm going to defer my, if the rest of the board represents that they're satisfied with what they presented, then I will concur with that. I do not have it in front of me, but it sounds like they are meeting at least the spirit and intent of what we asked them to do.
Well, let me describe it to you. Three abavites have gone on the island furthest to the, I guess that'd be, that'd be west, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
Towards the post office.
Right. Two, two three caliber trees, maples, one on the interior island that would be closest to the old daggets and two on Route 28.
And if I can make an interject, they are flowering cherries, not maples. That was changed.
Oh, that makes a big difference to me right now. So that's, that's what we're looking at, a rough diagram of that.
Okay.
Mr. Neets, do you have any question?
No, and I sat on this when it came through before too, I'm pretty sure. But I wondered, you know, I can understand the roots for the septic system, but is there any possibility of any other plantings that don't put down deep roots that it?
There's probably a possibility. It's just the, the islands are very narrow. And when you're there, it has to be a tree that's not very wide.
Or shrub?
Well, you did, the abavites, we swapped those out.
Right, those were, those were recommended. A shrub might work. Anything is going to be, it's a tough situation in terms of the tree, the trees.
And the traffic over that area too, probably with the people walking through.
Correct. And just the way that the cars park so that they're almost approaching into each island.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, I personally think the abavites are the right thing. They're going to stay narrow compared to many things, but otherwise, it would have to be something that had a, had a trunk and the leaves were above, so.
Right.
I'm not sure what else you could do.
Yeah, okay. Plastic? Plastic palm trees or something?
I've got no questions, but I got to tell you, anything that's, anything that happens in that parking lot is an improvement.
Yeah, I agree.
One of the worst, worst locations, and I'm glad you're not the landlord, right?
Right, it's the post office.
Well, anyway, it's a very poorly maintained parking lot. No, no aspersion upon you. Okay. So, Mr. Igo, are you prepared to go forward with this after the discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am.
Okay. Does anybody wish to make a motion? What it would be is to remove the condition, and I don't remember the condition number. Can you tell us what number that was?
Sure. I'm not sure if it had a number. It was at the, yeah, there was not a petition, I mean, sorry, there was not a condition number. It was on the second page immediately before a vote was taken. It's the only condition.
Oh, okay.
It would sure help if you dated your memorandum too.
Certainly.
Yep.
Okay, so you're right. It's in paragraph, the third from the bottom paragraph. And it says that there was a motion made by Mr. Igo, seconded by Mr. Frapery to approve the grant of a special permit, subject to the conditions that four three caliber, three inch caliber trees be planted in each of the two islands in the property parking lot, and that two additional trees be planted in the buffer located along Route 28. So I guess if someone is to fashion a motion, they would suggest that the condition as set forth within the decision regarding a landscape be determined to be fulfilled.
We, Mr. Chairman, can we get a count on those trees again? Is there a plan that's being submitted as an exhibit that we can reference for the future?
Yeah, there is.
There is. Again, it shows two. At least on the, on the key, it shows two three-inch, I'm now being told flowering trees along Route 28.
Yeah.
One in the, in the interior, closest to the old daggets, and three arborvitae's on the facing interior island.
Basically, it's the same number, Sean, of trees that have been planted. The only difference is there's three arborvitae's on one island rather than three three-inch caliper flowering trees. So it's the same number of trees. It's just a different type, is what I see.
That's true.
For what it's worth.
Okay, so the number's staying the same? Is that what the representation is?
Yeah, it's just on the one island where the septic field is, there's three arborvitae's instead of the flowering, whatever.
Well, I want to correct that for you, Sean, because what it says is that four three-inch caliber trees be planted in each of the two islands and two along Route 28. So, so that's eight, 10.
That's 10. So how many do we have now from 10?
That's being added? Six.
No, subtracted. We had 10 that were required. How many have proposed?
There's six additional there, but being put in, but there's already three or four in present there today. So that equals the 10. That's my point. So they have the same number that we asked for. If you include those that were there, plus those that are added, it just, they changed three of them from the, from the three-inch deciduous to three arborvitae's on the septic island. I think that's what I'm seeing.
That's correct. I think the intent was to replace the trees that had died that were required in a prior decision, and I did try. Many people in town tried to figure out, find those decisions. We looked with the planning board, and we looked with the ZBA, and they weren't able to find the prior decisions. They may have been under Daggett rather than Ryan Family Amusement, but under either name, we couldn't find them.
So anyway, so anyway, Sean, that's, that's the best I can do to answer it, but there are 10. It's just they're different, three of them are a different type than originally requested. And that's because of the septic, from what I'm understanding.
That's correct.
Anybody?
Two islands, correct?
Yes.
Just two islands?
Four trees and some of the, and one of the islands, or both, I guess.
Both of them have, yes, so.
Okay. All right, that's fine. That's, that's fine with me. If the rest of the board is satisfied, then I'm satisfied as well.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, so I'd, I'd be happy to make a motion that we.
Well, why don't we hold on that for a moment? Mr. Neets just wants to keep me on my toes and direct me when otherwise the mind is failing. Does anybody in our audience care to speak either in favor or against the suggested change to decision 4928? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, we now close it to the public input and open it up to board discussions, deliberations, and if anybody's ready to make a motion. Mr. Frapery, back to you.
I, I'd like to make a motion primarily just to accept the outline that was provided as an exhibit, which is basically the same number of trees. It's just three alternate arborvitae's in place of, on the, on the septic island.
Could we just make it a little simpler and say that we accept the trees that have been planted instead of because it represents the same, because I'm counting different than you, but that's okay.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Neets, second. Does the board care to have any discussion before moving it along to a vote?
I only have one concern, and that's to make sure that the petitioner knows that trees need water, particularly when they're recently planted, because the town has learned lessons over the years about that, and some of our petitioners have in the past, too. Can't rely on the rain.
You know, I drove by the location today on my way here, and I went through the parking lot after going to Buc-E's. And I want to tell you that I think it's way too busy down there if we add any additional trees, now that I've gone down and seen it. So. I, I'm going to speak in favor of the motion, but Mr. Igo, any thoughts from you?
No, I agree with what I've heard from the board. You know, obviously, we don't want to plant things that are not going to make sense to plant. They're likely to die. We can't have them interfering with the septic system. The chairman does make a good point that sometimes when you get trees in there, it might get too busy. There's a lot of cars that run through there, and a lot of kids running through there, and we certainly don't want anybody getting hurt. So I would be in support of the motion.
So we'll now have a roll call vote. Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Neets?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. De Youngs and I on a roll call vote. That carries four to zero. A, a, you know, there's really nothing you need to do, other than there will be a, an amendment or a let's call it an amendment to the decision filed with the town clerk's office, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Our next and last petition?
No.
No, it's not. I keep skipping one. Our next petition is 4946, that of.
You want dinner, that's why. You want your dinner, that's why.
Yeah, I shouldn't have. I think I'm falling asleep, too. Robert E. and Leslie M. Vignio. And that's property located at 12 Vermont Ave, West Yanath, Mass. That's in an R25 zoning district. Our applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 104.3.2, sub-paragraph 2, or, in the alternative, the variance, to increase the height of a non-conforming structure and the required setbacks. Would you be so kind as to tell us who you are, so that everybody at home knows?
Yes, I'm Bob Vignio, 12 Vermont Ave.
Why don't you go right ahead and tell us about your petition?
All right. Leslie and I bought the house in the fall of 2020, and with the knowledge that we were going to have to repair the foundation. While investigating our options on that, we came to the conclusion that if we're going to do that work, we should probably try to get out of the floodplain as well. So my petition is asking for setback relief. The house was built in 1966, and the current zoning wasn't in place at that time, I don't believe. And the house is already encroaching on the front and side yard setbacks. So I will be raising the house approximately five feet, which will get me out of the floodplain, in the same footprint of the existing house, with one notable exception. I'm adding a five-by-eight utility room so that I can also have my utilities above the flood zone. That area fortunately was designed within the side yard setbacks. So the encroachment, as you look at the house from the front, is the left side of the house and the front setbacks.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Neets?
My, my first question on this was, did you mean to say raise as in R-I-A-I-S-E, or raise as in R-A-Z-E?
Lift.
Lift. Elevate.
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to have the same house.
I am.
On a different foundation. Higher.
Correct.
All right. With the addition.
Correct.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Hey, Mr. Frapery?
Yeah, and I believe the addition is really to replace the chimney. Is that correct?
That is correct. The existing masonry chimney will be gone, and in its place will be a five-by-eight room, which will have a gas fireplace in it, as well as the furnace and hot water.
So, but I don't have any questions.
Mr. Igo?
No questions, thank you.
I have a couple. You've given me several sheets here that talk about elevation. I've always understood elevation to be, how high is it? This tells me nothing.
Okay.
How high is it?
It's 21 feet currently. It's a cape.
21 feet?
Correct.
So it'll go to 26 feet?
Uh, yes, yep.
So if we state that in a, in any decision that might come, that it's only, it would not exceed our height requirements of this town?
That is correct. We can safely say that.
Can you tell me, please, is this the only entry staircase that you can come to as a solution? I mean, if the number looks like five stairs to a platform, and then a landing, and then four stairs beyond that, that's pretty high. Particularly when you're so close to the street. Is that the only solution you had for that?
It kind of is, because I also have constraints with conservation. The, the alternative would be a farmer's porch, and I was, it was suggested that that was going to be more of encroachment on the setback requirement than landscaping.
Okay, do you have your, your renderings there in front of you?
I do.
I'd ask you to go to the sheet that says left and rear elevations.
Yes.
Am I looking at all exposed concrete there?
Yes.
What's the front? Want to have some rock treatment? It shows rock treatment, or at least stamped concrete. I don't know which.
No, no, that's going to be a field stone. They're going to be two-tiered, perhaps. I have one other picture. Well, if we look, if we look at the front elevation picture, then you'll, you'll note that there are plantings in front of the stone wall. That, those plantings are actually going to be about 36 inches up. So what shows is a gray wall in the front is actually an additional stone wall.
So when I look to the right of that front elevated, raised, what does it say? Raised walkway.
Yes.
And I, I see what appears to be bare concrete there, and I look to the left, and I see, oh, there's a planting. There's bare concrete there from the streetscape. Am I right?
That is correct.
Why, is there a reason the stone can't go on those two faces, or those three faces?
I could, I could probably stamp a stone face on it. I, I'm very limited in the fact that I am surrounded by conservation land. So I can't raise the elevation of my yard.
No, I, I fully get that, and, and, you know, in this town, there's an awful lot of similar properties, so it's not a new issue that comes before us. I'm thinking more about the aesthetics of, of looking at what appears to be. I don't have any scale on anything, so I can't tell, but to me, it looks like a four-foot wall of concrete. Is that about the height of that?
It would be four-plus feet of.
Four-plus feet?
Yeah. In, I mean, I will handle it with plantings. That's always been my intention, anyway, and that's what shows on the proposed.
You don't have any closer butters to the rear, anyway, do you? Because that's conservation.
Yeah, and I will be raising my existing deck to make it more accessible to the house. So that would be hiding.
I've got no concerns with the back, whatsoever.
Yeah.
Because in my back, I probably have five feet of exposed concrete, and you can dress it up. You're right, you can dress it up. I'm concerned about the streetscape. And so if we made a condition that you would be required to put plantings in that would substantially cover that concrete from the streetscape, is that a concern to you?
Not a bit. That's my intention.
All right. You know, the other thing you can do, you can, you can affix that plastic lattice work that many people put around their deck, and it dresses it up nicely to, you know, the bare concrete. So just a couple of thoughts, but I'm sorry, I just can't tell anything about ideas, so I'm doing it on your representation.
Mr. Chairman, I do have some questions.
Sure.
How many steps do you have going from the grade of the driveway up to the front door?
There are a total of 10. Eight steps will be within the wall doff area, so they won't show from the street. And then the top two steps are going to be a mini landing right at the front door, and one step down from there to.
So will I have to take a total of 10 steps, though, to get up into the house?
Yes.
So at eight inches a step, you're 80 inches off the, you're going to be 80 inches high, so you're going to be oh, you're going to be six and a half feet high?
No, actually, the rises are only approximately seven and a half inches.
Okay, so you'll be six, over six feet high now. Still, 75 inches. Ten steps times seven and a half, that's 75 inches.
Well, I understand your question, I think, and that's why I broke it up the way I did. There are eight steps. And then there's a walkway to the two additional steps.
Right. I'm looking at the front, but I'm more concerned about when I'm looking to the right, your jog, and how that goes around the corner to the side. So it sounds to me like you're going to have six feet of exposed concrete. And you really should, and you really should have an elevation that shows exactly the distance, how high this is, you know, from the street, even though, I mean, it's, it's not fatal, obviously. We can figure it out, but it would be nice for us to see that, but these scales that you're showing here really are not anywhere near accurate.
Okay, I believe that was addressed on a large plan that should have also been a part of the packet.
This one?
Yes.
I don't have that in front of me. Maybe others do. I mean, I, I guess the remedy that I would see for this, just to cut to the chase, is that we have something that covers those foundation areas along the front and along the sides where visible from the street. The rear, I'm not as concerned with, although, do you have people in the rear? I think Vermont, you run down to a dead end. I know Vermont pretty well. So you're down there by yourself. I understand that. But on the front and the side, I, not only would I think I would require you to do it, but anybody else, if your neighbors came and wanted to do the same thing. Okay, you have to build up high, obviously. You know, I know the elevation of that area quite well. I've lived over there for many years. But your scale here that we're looking at, this is six feet of concrete. If you scaled that to the wall that you're representing here, that's probably an eight-foot wall, that's really like a 18-foot wall if you scale it, the front wall to the, to the house, if we're going to scale this thing. So this is definitely disproportionate. So if you get 10 steps going up into the house, would you be willing to either stamp the foundation or put some type of lattice around the foundation to deck, to dress it up?
Well, my preference would be to do plantings.
Well, plantings unfortunately are only going to come up two feet or so, or three, then you still have three feet of concrete. I mean, I, I don't think plantings are feasible, unless you can come back and show us the scale. It's different than what I'm figuring.
Well, no, you're seeing, what you're suggesting is the case. The front stone wall, which is the flower bed, is 36 inches in height.
That's, that's the, it's 36 inches in height, that gray area that we're looking at out front that supports the flowers that are right behind it?
Yes.
So that small wall that you're seeing right there is three feet high?
Correct.
Okay, so if, if this is any type of scale, then the one behind it must be five?
The, the one behind it is actually 30 inches above. Uh, the, the one behind it is actually, um, thirty inches above.
Okay, well, it appears to me to be taller than that one.
It's, it's sixty-six inches in total, which makes it thirty inches taller than the one out in front.
So it is terraced?
It is.
Well, the front is terraced, the side is a terrace, right?
No, the side is not terraced. Um, I'm.
I mean, I want to work with you. I'm not trying to, I'm not really trying to give you a hard time. I'm, I'm just trying to work this out. So i- it looks good when it's finished and, and I mean, that'll look better for you as well. I mean, you know, it, it looks to me like you want to do a nice job. I, I'm just a bit concerned that you have too much exposed foundation there.
Well, if, uh, we want to continue the three-foot stone wall around to the side of the property, I think I can do that without it affecting my driveway. I, as I mentioned before, because of, I'm, I'm literally, three sides of that property is wetlands. And the other, well, the commission that I've been in front of, the conservation commission, is, um, reluctant with the amount of work I've already proposed, in their setbacks. And the plan that I just submitted to them today, which I brought because I understand that there's no way, this agency would have had an opportunity to see it. So, what I've done is on the, uh, left-hand side of the property, I've added two flowering dogwoods, uh, four high bush blueberries and nine creeping junipers to, um, as a ma- matter of remediation for the amount of encroachment this current layout has had
Pretty sure.
on the wetlands. Setback requirements, not the wetlands themselves, just the setbacks. It, um, looking at this map, if I continue the thirty-six foot wall, um.
I think you're going to have to go back to the conservation commission to get approval, but so that, by the way.
I'm sorry?
I think you're going to have to go back to the conservation commission to get approval if you want to continue a thirty-six inch wall protruding out from your foundation to support your flower beds. I think in the front, they probably didn't have a problem with it, but I think if you move to the side, either side, you're going to trigger, um, a requirement to go back to conservation.
Well, that, yes, and I'm going, I am scheduled to meet with them next Thursday.
You see, you're, you see what you have labeled right elevation? That's the side of your house that I presume, are you on the right side of, uh, or the left side of?
I, I, I am on the right side.
You're on the right. Okay, so those three windows face the water, okay? Face Louis Bag. That side there, you have right elevation. All of that exposed foundation right there. I think the simplest way for you to address it would be to just put white lattice there up against the foundation and just have somebody glue it to it or nail it to it. And I, I would be satisfied with that. That would be the most inexpensive way to fix that. I don't know, maybe you don't like white lattice. I mean, that's a personal preference, but I know a lot of people use it. They also use a vertical shiplap these days, become very popular, which looks nice as well.
I, I think I'd probably be more inclined to go with the vertical shiplap. I, I do.
There's a, there's a house over on Old Wharf Road in Dennisport that is a good illustration of it. They had a ten feet of foundation exposed and they covered it with that vertical shiplap and it looks beautiful when it's done. It looks really nice.
And you said that was Dennisport?
Yeah, over on Old Wharf Road, right off Lower County. If you drive down past the Swan River Fish Bar, I could take that right on Old Wharf, go down around the corner and you'll see it on the left-hand side away from the water.
Okay.
It's a place they just built. It's a great big, uh, it's on the corner there. You can't miss it, but you can get an idea of that vertical shiplap. Like I said, it looks really nice.
Okay, uh, I will look into that option and, um, I, I just want to also remind the board that, um, a significant can part of the foundation, if we go to the foundation sheet, which does have much more detail, um, the foundation plan shows, uh, flood vents, which I can't walk.
You can do cutouts on those with the shiplap, just cut around them and just leave those exposed.
Okay, all right, good, yep.
Well, I, I, I think that in order to, I, I really detest exposed concrete from any streetscape, okay? And it's really a sore thumb with me, particularly when I'm looking at this amount, amount. So I think that we, we, we don't need to wait for your election of option i- unless you are prepared to go on with this meeting at another meeting. So we either need to make a decision tonight.
I understand.
And, and if it's not in some fashion to cover the exposed concrete from each streetscape or sidescape, because apparently, you know, that's readily seen. As I look at the house that exists, the sides are readily seen from the street as well.
One side?
One side, just one side.
Primarily, it's primarily the right side of the house is facing it from the street and I understand completely and I'm in full agreement that that much concrete is not anything I want to look at either.
I don't, I don't doubt it, because, you know, if you had, if you were building like a couple of houses on the water that have built up, they've got the lattice on the first floor, on the first level. And, you know, you don't see the, the concrete or the, or the steel supports or whatever is holding the house up that high. But in this case, you've got foundation with concrete all around. And I think that y- you should have some concern about that much exposed concrete, which I think you do, but if we, if we make, render a decision that the front in that right end be covered in some material rather than the exposed concrete, then you could decide whether you wanted to use stone, whether you wanted to use, uh, pressed concrete or whether you wanted to use something that's going to be attractive and not just the concrete or the, or the shiplap.
Right, and, and, um, if the members agree, um, I would do, uh, a thorough investigation of plantings that would, um, cover at least the majority of the concrete.
I, I think we're looking for coverage because the plantings, you know, that we require, you know, I don't think the neighbors want to wait five years until they grow up and cover most of it. Um, or you want to wait that long. Or we don't want to have, uh, you sell the house and have the next guy come and decide to rip out all the plantings.
Then I, I would, I, I understand that as well. Um, and then that would mean that I would have to get, um, two gallon bushes I couldn't get.
Yeah.
Hey, I.
We're not going to redesign your plan.
I'm not going to leave it to your election as to what works. I want to know what it is if I'm voting on it tonight.
And if it were plantings, we'd want to see a landscape plan.
Ask to vote on this as it's presented to me, I will vote against it, which means it will, it will not pass. And there has to be coverage of every square inch of concrete that I see from the street, whether I can see it from, and there's no, no compass here, so I don't know if I'm talking, let's just talk right and left, talking about the front door. I think the front door, the solution you have there is pretty good because you're right, that, that three-foot wall is, that, you know, above the bed is going to cover those, those first steps. Too bad you got to have a rail, but, you know, you gotta. But the rest of it, I, I mean, it, there's got to be a solution. Uh, and if you can't provide it tonight, then, you know, we can put you on another agenda and tell us what works for you and consider it. But, uh, I also really don't like to approve anything that doesn't have an elevation on it, but I'll accept your representation.
Yeah, I, I apologize for that oversight, but I was using the, this plan.
Yeah, you don't need to. You don't need to apologize. I'm just saying I like to see it on that, that, you know, if you ever come back, want to build another house, make sure you got your elevation on there, will you?
Yeah, I, as again, I thought they were addressed on this plan, that's why they weren't on the other one, but that's, you're going to, um, well, uh.
I have to make a decision tonight. We can get you back on pretty quick. Not only that, any decision, any decision tonight is going to be subject to the Concom approval anyway. So it'd be much better to have Concom approval in hand, so you don't have to come back here a second time. In case they want to make a change.
I do have another question. Do you know what the top of your foundation is for elevation? And do you know what the top of the, do you know what the elevation is at street level?
We do.
What are those two numbers?
The elevation at the street level is, uh, five feet.
And what's top of foundation?
Top of foundation is, um, twelve feet.
Okay, so you have seven feet of exposed concrete.
Uh, no, because you asked for this elevation at the street, the elevation.
More or less, more or less, yeah.
Yeah.
How much you, yeah.
At the house is, uh.
Let me see, it should be right here. I just expanded my plan. This thing, well, you got to exist in this. We have proposed. Who drew this plan? Hold on, I want to look at something.
Five, seven at the house. Four feet at the street and five, seven at the house.
Five, seven, and then it's going to be to twelve, so that sounds like six, three to me, but, okay.
I believe, I believe if you look at the, um, northeast corner of the house, which is the, is from the street, the left-hand side, you'll see five point six. That's the existing elevation at the house currently. If you look at the existing conditions plan, that's not going to get lowered.
Oh, okay, your, your first floor is thirteen, your top of foundation is twelve. Your basement floor is five point six. That's your basement floor. That's not at the, uh, that's not at street level. That's going to be higher than the street. Let me get something here. It's going to be something somewhere. I don't see any contours on this plan.
They're the black, fine dashed lines. If you go just outside of my property, um, at the end of the gravel road extension of.
Oh, I see there's a five through that contour. I see it. Okay, well, thi- this is kind of the bottom line. I, and I, I don't mean to interrupt with anybody, but just so I can get my point across here, so we don't belabor this all night. Your fir-, your, 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 your house is going to be significantly up in the air. So I, I would have to see something that looks aesthetically pleasing in order for that to get my vote. So I would agree to the shiplap. If you want to agree to that, all exposed areas must have shiplap. If you want to do stamped on your, uh, on the front there, that's fine, but everything else would need to be white shiplap for me. And you can put in any plantings as you want, as far as I'm concerned, but I need to see all of that covered as would I with anybody that comes with a petition like this before us. This house is going to be way up in the air. Your first floor elevation's at thirteen feet. So if you're standing on your first floor and you look down at the street, it's thirteen feet below you. So you're going to be climbing up into this house. So I, I think you need to make it look nice for your neighbors in the surrounding area here, just as I think anybody else that comes before this board that seeks similar relief needs to do the same for you. And we're seeing a lot more of that down here in this area because it's a very low-lying area of town, as the board is aware. We have had these come before us before, but they generally have a provision that covers all that. You do not have that tonight, so.
And consistent with prior decisions, if we're going to stay consistent with prior decisions on this sort of thing, we always require that essentially it be covered.
Yes.
Although many of them are raised, as Dick pointed out, many of them are just up on stilts or pilings or whatever they are.
So, yeah.
I mean, I don't care about the backyard, quite honestly. I, that doesn't front anything other than conservation, right?
Uh, the.
Yeah, I don't think.
And the, actually, the, uh, left, left, the, from the street, the left-hand side of the house too, which would be the, uh, northeast side of the house. Also just faces. Wetlands. The driveway side and the front.
You want to, Sean, did you want to limit him to the shiplap or would you give him the flexibility to choose either stone or imitation stone or, or, um, uh, pressed concrete or?
Lattice? Or lattice?
Or lattice, yeah.
I, I, that, that's personal preference. I, I can live with anything that he chooses. My per- my personal preference would be the shiplap. I think it would make the house look the best, but.
Yeah, but I don't think it's, I don't think we should have to choose what she's going to live with either. I mean.
I, I agree. I, it's his house. She should be able to pick what he likes, but it, but it has to be covered.
Well, so I understand, just those two faces or all faces?
All, it's, well, I have three faces, the front and both sides. Now, the rear, it's a representation that you can't see it from anywhere. Can you see the rear of that house from the houses that are over there at Englewood Beach? When you look out their back doors across the marsh?
Can I see the houses on Englewood Beach?
No, can.
No, across behind you, over on, uh, what's the name of that road, Dick? Over there at Englewood.
Connecticut, New Hampshire.
Well, yeah, New Hampshire.
Yeah, New Hampshire. Um, they can see my roof.
Okay, all right. I, I didn't think you could see across there.
And I don't think you can see the left end of the house either, can you? Because that's conservation.
Yeah, there's fully mature trees on that side as well. And I also want to point out to the board, if it wasn't clear, um, the back deck, which is a significant portion of the back of the house, will be going up with the house. So it'll be having one step into my house from my deck.
Yeah.
So it's, that's going to hide the back.
Yeah.
For the most part, I would think.
Is, is conservation requiring you to move these patio pavers?
I, yes, those are getting moved and, um.
IAPIC getting moved?
That, yeah, all that is gone.
Okay. All right.
I think you made a very good point, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm so glad somebody thinks so.
Until I have, until I have the final from the conservation commission, we're all just kind of speculating on what's going to happen next.
And, and you know, you then have a chance to go out and find the material that you can commit to as being what you'd like to see. And I, you know, I understand that, that looking at the house and the front door, the left side faces, uh, conservation. It just would be very odd to me as a potential purchaser of your home that I've got this stuff on two sides and I don't have it on the third side. But, you know, I'm, if Mr. Igo says he wants it on three, I'll go along with that. If everybody's in agreement, the two sides, uh, uh, are sufficient, I'll go along with that. But I'd be much more comfortable if you could provide to our, our board a sheet indicating the scale of what you're showing here. Is that possible on these drawings? You do it on a CAD system?
Uh, it is a CAD system, but I'm just, uh.
All right, well, at least show me the height. At least show.
We'll show you the heights and, um, I will, uh, make my best effort to give the board. some ability to chime in on the decision on what's going to cover the foundation. I'm going to hopefully have a couple of options that, and one we can all agree to.
Yeah, I, to be honest, oh, other than plantings, if you're coming back to tell me plantings, that's not going to work for me.
I got that message loud and clear.
All right. But, but I, like Mr. Igo, uh, Mr. Neets, and I, I, I think even Mr. Frapery chimed in. I don't care what you put there, just so long as we solve the problem. That's a matter of your taste.
Well, I, I heard some mention of stamped, um, concrete and stuff like that. I know that there is a product, um, that gives the look of stone that can be just applied to the face of pretty much anything.
Yeah, it's almost a veneer.
It, yes. Um, well, yeah, they've got so many choices now. I used to actually, I retired from being a builder. So I'm, I know how to find this stuff out and I will do that. And it sounds from previous comments made tonight that, um, the first meeting in June, I may be so presumptuous to assume.
There are now two items on that agenda, so there is space.
Well. Does, does that work with you, Mr. Igo?
Sure, that's fine.
Does that work with you, Mr. Neets?
As far as I know.
And Mr. Frapery? Works with me too? So let's put it on then. You need to sign an extension agreement, okay?
I'd be happy to do that. Brought my red pen.
Look, I think you, I think the, the improvement to the property is great. I really do.
And the savings on an annual basis will probably be significant too.
I'm actually looking further down the road. I just want a place for my kids and grandkids to be able to go to without a problem.
You sure you want the grandkids there?
More so.
All right, nice seeing you, sir. I'm not reading in, uh, conservation memo dated April 14 because it merely says they want you to come back and make some changes, so no need to read that in. Brings us to our last matter.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I, I believe we need a motion to continue.
Ah, geez, you, you know, everybody's, it's time that I step back.
Let's, no, 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 don't get excited. You're doing, you're doing a great job.
Make a motion there, will you, Mr. Igo?
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this matter until June 12th for further hearing.
No, June 9.
June 9.
Second.
And on that, would care to have any discussion, hearing none, Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Neets?
Aye.
Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung is an aye. That's a four oh roll call vote to grant the continuance to June 9. Look forward to seeing you then, sir.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. We really want to approve it, I promise. Nikolai Petrov Denev. Property got 18 Huntington Avenue, South Yarmouth, Mass. In a B3 APD zoning district. Our applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to, uh, bylaws section 103.2. I'm sorry, for, for use allowed under use regulation schedule 202.5 E18 for a small wood coating operation. Good evening, sir. Would you tell us who you are?
My name is Nikolai Danov and.
Did I pronounce it wrong?
Cape Cod Fine Finishes.
I'm sorry. Go right ahead and tell us.
Yeah, Nikolai Danov, owner of the Cape Cod Fine Finishes Painting Company. And, yeah.
Okay, are you gonna? All right, we're going to have questions, why is that what that, I hope you're gonna get through it. Mr. Igo, do you have questions?
Uh, yes, um, I presume you are here, uh, primarily because you're in the APD. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
That's my understanding of it, because you're going to be using paint products.
Right.
APD.
Right.
Okay.
And do we have a, a memo, Mr. Chairman, from the Board of Health?
I haven't gotten that far, but I will, I will right now.
We do.
You do?
We do, we do.
From Board Health?
From Board Health, from Mr. Carl Lawson.
Well, maybe now's the time to just read that in then. Nice letterhead, by the way, I want to tell you.
Well, thank you.
Board of Health memorandum dated April 8, 22. Excuse me. Our petitioner, the owner of Cape Cod Fine Finishes LLC, met with our building commissioner and on September 9, regarding his proposal to rent the commercial unit of 583 Forest Road, Unit A, in which the petitioner explained his overall business operation and the specific operations he proposes to conduct at this location. Cape Cod Fine Finishes conducts the residential and commercial interior and exterior painting along with wood cleaning. You do that through chemicals?
No.
Okay, uh, since that time, uh, the petitioner has changed his plan to instead occupy 18 Huntington Avenue as his occupancy of the unit at 583 Forest Road never came to fruition. At 18 Huntington Ave, Mr. Denev proposes to, one, park company vehicles, two, store high goods, three, store a small quantity of latex paint, and four, conduct spray finish application of latex paint to finish carpentry components such as wooden trim and molding. The proposed location is within the APD. I'm, I'm going to go over some of the, you know, comments, uh, in the consideration by the board out and come to their recommendations. They express the site concern, uh, that the Board of Health inspected the property on February 17, and as part of the Building Department permitting procedure for the new property owner. Of concern to the Health Department is the presence of two old power boats stored on the north side of the property and the possibility they could leak flu, uh, fuel to the ground. Again, this location is within the town APD for the public drinking water supply. In the course of inspecting marinas and working with the Fire Department, Health Department has learned power boats ought to be stored filled with fuel as required by fire code, since the fire, uh, liquid fuel crowds out, uh, fumes and the fire safety issue they create. After the inspection, I called the new property owner, who is not present at the occupancy inspection, and discussed my concern regarding a potential fuel release from these boats. The new property owner stated the boats belong to the former property owner and thought the boats might be empty of fuel. I relayed to him that boats are typically stored filled with, uh, filled and should be removed from the property. He stated he would contact the former owner and report back to the Health Department, uh, Health Office, uh, regarding the timeframe for removing the boats. Today, no update has been received. Has that now been?
Yes, so, uh, he has to move the boats by contract till June, but we contacted him and he said he's going to come and take them out earlier. So we waiting any moment he to come and just move them. He lives in Florida, so that's why, on the contract, we, we have a contract with him. Like on the contract, he stayed, he'll move them June. He has time to, June this year to move it, so.
That contract is with the new owner?
No, with the previous owner. So the new owner and the previous owner, they had that contract because.
But they have the contract that says that the previous owner's going to remove the boats?
He's going to remove the boats. They're his boats, and that was stated in the contract when he bought the shop. It's, yeah.
Let me ask, is there any containment for any of the spraying that you'll do?
No, we're going to use water-based paint basically, and that's all.
And how are you going to clean your tools?
Well, with water, like circulating water, which we're going to contain in the five-gallon buckets, and we're going to hard with a hardener, and we're just going to dispose to the.
So, so what is there, an interior drain? I'm, I'm assuming you're going to do the spraying inside the building?
Right, right.
And how, where's, where's it going to go as after, is, is, does the floor have a floor drain?
For the spraying? No, the clean room, we're going to do a clean room. We're going to put a room inside the building. So that room is going to have HEPA filters and everything is going to go through filters. Those filters need to be replaced every three weeks.
And have a spray booth, in other words.
Kind of.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
But where is the water going to go?
The water from.
Cleaning of your tools?
Well, there is, uh, as I say, there is a machine, like, the water runs through the machine and we collect that water. It's a special equipment for cleaning.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it's not like we clean into the drain or anything, nothing like that.
I'm just concerned.
Yeah, no.
Because it's APD, I don't want to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, yeah, for sure.
And we don't have any input here.
You came to us before, right? And we went through this. I remember going through it at one point, yeah.
So everything went through. We just never came to agreement with the previous owner or the different shops. So that's why we changed the location.
No change in what you're doing.
Nothing, everything is the same, the same thing.
Mr. Igo, do you have any questions about petitioner?
No, but I think if he's using only latex paint, I don't think that's going to be a concern to the water. I, that's all, uh, that's all pretty clean stuff these days. If he was using oil and turpentine and things like that, I would have concerns. I think we should have a restriction on here that there'll be no other paints except latex paint used.
I remember when a fellow was doing some painting at my home and he knocked a, uh, five-gallon bucket of paint over and it laid on my ground for probably seven, eight months before it finally dissipated, so. I don't know. I don't know where it went. I gotta believe it went down into the soil.
You're not in the APD though.
What?
You're not in the APD.
No, I'm not. No, no, I would have brought a hazmat group to a. Any other questions to the petitioner, Mr. Igo?
No, I think I covered it. Thank you. No, I, I, again, the petitioner has been before us before. I know he, as, uh, Mr. Frapery said, he's, he was trying to get another situation, I believe, what was over, uh, Forest Road, and that didn't work out. And he said he's going to do the same thing. I think we vetted him before and it appears as to what he's representing that he's going to be doing over there. It sounds like a, a clean operation and I, I'm satisfied if the, if the Board of, uh, Health is satisfied that, uh, it's going to be fine over there. And I don't think we can do anything about the boats relative to this petitioner. I think that's an issue of, uh, the current owner. However, that works out.
The health.
By health, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Neets?
I have no problem, provided he gets the approval from the Board of Health to do what he wants to do. And they are the, more of the enforcers of that bylaw than, than we are, I think. So that's, that's important that they're happy. And I, I have to say, just as an editorial, that it's been a while since I've been down Huntington Avenue and I was not impressed, um, with the condition and that some of the garbage that's out in front of all those buildings, including parts of engines and everything else. And I think somebody in the town should be taking a look at that because it's supposed to have been improved years ago and it doesn't look any better today than it did 10 years ago.
Yeah, I remember when we talked about they were going to clean that whole act up over there. Mr. Frapery?
Who would have been doing that? Who would have done the cleaning?
Well, there were people that were looking for relief, so we were at least hoping they cleaned their properties.
Okay.
We clean ours. Ours clean outside. Like, we pick up, trash everything. We've been doing that for a week, so.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah. It's going to look uniform for sure.
And I understand that in an industrial area, you don't necessarily, you know, you're going to have trucks and you're going to have equipment and all that stuff, but, you know, the, the wasted materials and the wasted trucks don't need to be in the front yard. And that's.
Like your fault.
Yeah.
No, I did.
You're just a tenant.
I did drive by today and, and in front of your building was in good shape. Everything looked good.
We tried to keep.
Have, are you in there yet? Are you there yet?
I mean, we are kind of, I mean, not 100%, but, yeah. I mean, we plan, we wait for it. We wait for it.
You're not there.
Without permission, no. I've been, I look at it.
We want positive deniability here, plausible deniability.
There's no work being done, but it was nice and clean.
No, no, no work.
So I remember you, and I, and I got to tell you, first of all, I'm delighted to see a new business that you can be successful at, that allows you, so successful at that it allows you to open up and expand your business, number one.
Thank you.
Number two, I think that you're going to do a great job over there because you sound like a guy that's very committed to doing the right thing. Like Mr. Neets and like Mr. Igo and, and I, I think, Mr. Frapery, I'm going to, uh, want to see that it's all subject to Board of Health approval, okay? Because they're really more involved in, in protecting the aquifer than we are, but we work hand in hand to try to do that, okay? Let's see when I can.
They have inspectors and we don't. Yeah, yeah, that's right.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if I could suggest, and I think we have done in the past, that any decision in favor of this petition tonight, that we adopt the Board of Health memorandum, on that, uh, the April 8, 2022 Board of Health memorandum regarding this petition.
Adoption. So the condition upon an adoption of any requirements of the Board of Health?
Or what's contained.
Memorandum too.
I think they spell over in the memorandum what they, what they would agree to and what they don't.
But it's not complete.
Isn't there some conditions down the bottom? Uh, toxic disposal. Be retained and see under toxic or hazardous materials disposal. They have five. I guess that's what I would primarily adopt and anything regarding equipment, uh, cleaning. Uh, toxic or hazardous materials use, handling and storage, materials delivery, um, and regulatory items.
Well, I can, I can do that in terms of all of.
Why don't we just incorporate the memorandum into our decision?
That's fine. It's not complete, though.
And you want to request a, uh.
I feel the completed memorandum.
Well, what a health approval, and we should then know that they've approved it and the conditions, because if they have other conditions that they're going to set forth, I want those included too.
I agree.
And all conditions set forth, what is it, February what?
Um, it's April 8.
Oh, I'm sorry, April 8 memo. And.
Or any revisions thereof.
And, yeah, and, and any additions or revisions, yeah? Made by Board of Health. So is anybody prepared to make a motion on that, uh, to approve this petition subject to those conditions, of that condition?
I would move to, to approve subject to the condi- conditions that we've just reiterated. Or iterated.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Frapery seconds?
I'm afraid to get too wordy.
Excuse me.
You're not contagious, I hope.
No, this is a smoker's cough.
Oh, good.
And unless you smoke with me.
No, I don't smoke with you.
Mr. Igo, do you care to have any discussion on the motion made and seconded?
No, I, I think we've covered everything. I, uh, am impressed with the petitioner's presentation that I think he has, uh, pride in his work as well as his business. I think he is going to be a good steward of the property at Huntington Ave and hopefully, uh, his, uh, his way of doing things rubs off on the rest of the people along Huntington Ave. Because I do agree with Dick that I think it needs to be cleaned up to the extent that there probably needs to be some enforcement action over there by the town.
All right, now, does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor or against this petition? If so, please come to the microphone. Let us hear what you have to say.
Nope.
There being none. Is there anyone in our virtual audience that has their hand raised to speak either in favor or against this petition?
No.
I'm hearing the answer's no, and I'll accept that answer. So therefore, we now close it to public. to public input and, and consideration of the petition. Open it up to board discussion and deliberation. Uh, Mr. Neets, you, you have any question?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Along to a vote?
Ready to vote.
Mr. Frapri?
I'm fine.
Mr. Uh, Igo, your vote?
Uh, I vote aye.
Mr. Neets?
I vote aye.
And Mr. Frapri?
Aye.
As well as do I. So, that carries on a 4-0 vote. Now, what's gonna happen is finally you're gonna get a decision that I'm gonna write up and it's gonna be filed with the town clerk's office.
Thank you.
Twenty days must elapse before that decision is considered ripe for your, uh, bringing down to the registry of deeds and having it recorded, okay? So, those twenty days are really generally a, a technical waiting period, but it is available in case somebody that is a party of interest cares to appeal, okay? I don't think that's gonna happen, not down your locale anyway, and I want to wish you great success in your business.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You deserve it and I'm happy to see it.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Alright, so we do have one last matter.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got two actually, but we can't do one of them. We gotta wait till Dick Neets is here. Dick Martin's here. Yes, you have a great night. Good, good to see you. So, we have two other matters on our agenda. That is election of officers, uh, which we are sorely in need of doing. Uh, but that, I, I think requires all four of our regular mi- members, unless somebody feels differently. Uh, but then who knows if Mr. Martin would like to, uh, take on a, a different role. So, does anybody, does everybody agree we need four, four regular members?
Yeah.
To vote the offices?
I think you probably could do it with, with a quorum of three, but I, I think for propriety, it would probably be best-
Oh, I think, yeah, he deserves that. Yeah. Yeah. And rules and regulations update, we've already done that, so that completes our agenda except for somebody moving to adjourn.
I moved to adjourn?
And we heard a second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously, we adjourn.
Seven thirty.
My God, I'll sleep deafening. It feels like ten thirty.
Good night, gentlemen and ladies.